For the police department to fund a court ordered back pay. The court ordered back pay comes from as the result of an arbitration decision that was made against the town. Arbitration is the mutually agreed upon dispute resolution process for collective bargaining units whereby disputes over discipline are heard by an independent arbitrator. This specific case deals with a police sergeant who was terminated in 2021 in order to be reinstated and back and paid back wages by the arbitrator. The dollar amount that you see here was already paid to the police officer, so the money has left the town's coffers. It is now with the police officer. In Massachusetts, when you get a court order, you do not need town meeting appropriation to make the payment. You have to follow the court order. However, the state will not allow the town to close its books on July 1st with a deficit. There's obviously a deficit. This wasn't planned. And so this article is an accounting mechanism to take the money from general fund stabilization to clear the deficit that currently exists in the police department salary and wages. Because it's coming from general stabilization requires a two thirds majority on town meeting floor and the finance committee and select board voted five zero in favor. Questions?
Yes. Has the executive minutes that resulted in this officer being fired been released yet?
They have not for two reasons. One, under the open meeting law, executive session minutes that deal with, oop, excuse me, I do apologize, that deal with personnel matters generally do not need to be released. But even more importantly, the open meeting law allows a board to keep minutes pending or related to a pen civil or criminal matter held until that matter is resolved. So in this case, there is an ongoing civil complaint against the town involving this particular matter. And so until that is resolved, those executive session minutes are still being withheld.
Okay. Okay. The other thing that this does not talk about is what the vote was by the select board. Not not mentioned here. It was three to two. Is that not correct? Three select board members, one of the guy fired, two did not?
The vote at the time was not three to two. I know that there was comments made in a public meeting that there were three in favor, two opposed. I believe it was only a four member board when the decision was made.
So it was three to one?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
You don't know that? Okay. Huh. You don't know that? And you only know that because you see the executive minutes?
Correct.
Ooh. What another tangle we have to leave. Okay, the other thing this doesn't describe that people have going to have a right to know at town meeting is that May 20th, 2020, Sergeant Mark Borke was fired. I mean, was put on administrative leave, received pay until November 21st of 2021. So he actually because of a poor decision by select board members, probably the poorest decision in the history of Tingsboro, other than, other than premature renewal of an aggregation electrical aggregation contract that costs taxpayers, cost electric people in town that pay an electric bill, cost them over a million dollars. Okay? This is probably the second worst thing that's happened in Tingsboro. But in but over that period of time, he's on administrative leave, he collected over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, this, this are made up numbers. These are from a wage reports posted online. And I assume he got paid for healthcare insurance, another 20 grand. So we're 20 grand a year, whatever they get paid, I don't know. Let's just round it up and say he probably got like $200,000 in addition to the 688. So that it's even a more egregious mistake. So I, I, I just can't, I can't, I just, it's just unbelievable that there isn't one of those three select board members here or one of us left to here to see this tonight. Not one of them. Okay, and so that should be pointed out. The two of them are still seated on the board and neither of them are here. So I'll leave it go right there, but this is, this is one of the worst things that's happened in Tingsboro. One of the poorest decisions made. Thank you.
Any other questions on special town meeting article one? All right, moving along to the annual town meeting. Annual town meeting article one is report of the town officers and committees to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the town officers and committees as printed or take any other action relative thereto. This appears on the warrant every year and asks town meeting to approve and accept the annual town report, which was published a few weeks ago, is available at tingsboroughmay.gov in hard copy at the town clerk's office and the town manager's office and will be available ahead of town meeting on Tuesday, May 6th. This simply requires a simple majority vote. Questions on article one? Excellent. Article two is deposits to stabilization funds to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 from the following source to the following stabilization fund for the purpose herein specified. $150,000 from certified free cash to the special ed stabilization fund. The special ed stabilization fund takes care of funding for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation. These are costs that vary based on a student's needs and the district can't accurately predict who will move into the district during a fiscal year. So many years ago, somebody far smarter than me created a special ed stabilization fund to help offset those mid-year often expenses. Certified free cash is the balance between what we expected to collect in revenue and what we expected to spend from the budget and what we collected above our expend our planned revenue and what we didn't spend. This requires a majority vote. Questions on article two? Excellent. Article three is to authorize appropriations from stabilization funds for fiscal year 2026 to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to expend up to the following amounts from the following stabilization funds for the following purposes. First, $900,000 from the road stabilization fund. That stabilization fund was established to fund roadway improvements, including the related incidental costs such as, but not limited to drainage, pedestrian access, lighting and signage. Unlike some of our other stabilization funds, town meeting has set a revenue dedication for this fund, so 75% of all the cannabis excise revenue that's collected in Tingsboro goes directly into that account. Typically, we allocate $800,000 from that account. This year, the increase is to 900,000. Over the last few years, we haven't spent every penny that's in there. We're collecting more than we're appropriating. And we'll talk in the budget article, which is article six, about the reduction in the general fund contribution to roads. So this year's increase was intended to help us meet our road spending plan for fiscal 26. $177,000 from the special ed stabilization fund. As we discussed in article two, this funds unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education. You'll note that the last article deposited $150,000 from free cash. There is currently an unspent balance of $27,000. The way stabilization funds work is that town meeting is the authority that has control over the spending, so the appropriation at town meeting is for the current fiscal year. In this case, in order for the school department to use funds that were allocated for this year but not spent, another town meeting vote is required. So that's the 150 that we're depositing in plus the 27,000 that exists today. $151,000 from the capital asset stabilization fund. That's to fund the purchase of a new backhoe for the Department of Public Works as recommended by the Capital Asset Management Committee in the fiscal year 2026 capital plan. The capital stabilization account is funded primarily through free cash. We've made a few deposits into that over the last several fiscal years. The final one is $200,000 from debt stabilization to fund the payment of debt service within the general fund for the middle school project in fiscal year 2026. The debt stabilization account was established a few years ago, but last year was the first time we deposited funds into the debt stabilization. As we'll talk about in the budget article, this is the first year that the town's operating budget is meeting the million dollar contribution to lower the debt exclusion. And so in order to make that work within the budget, we're using $200,000 from debt stabilization. If that $200,000 isn't needed, either because revenues end up higher than we planned, we would be able to at a subsequent town meeting, be it in October or May of next year, reallocate from free cash that $200,000. So the purposes you see here are the only things these funds can be used for. This requires a majority vote and the select board and finance committee both recommended them four zero in the case of the select board and five zero in the case of the finance committee. Questions on article three?
Yes, sir. Um, am I supposed to say who I am?
You're good.
Billy Crawford. First one on the debt stabilization. Is that, should I have reached out to capital asset committees such as for that wall, that guardrail? Should I have sent an email to them?
No, no, no. You came to the right place.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, no, you came to the right place.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't know if I should have sent it out to them.
No, 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 you're good.
Their purview to look at that.
We can have DPW take care of it without a tremendous expense.
Okay. I don't know if you've seen that.
I did drive down there today.
The rest of it?
Yeah.
I'm gonna show you one end of it.
Yeah. Certainly hasn't been touched. We're talking for those that aren't familiar with.
Whatever.
Right.
The other thing, I think we do need to go the story behind the story, and I'd rather do that this evening than you get tricked into it at annual town meeting.
Yep.
Okay, this $200,000, because I remember hearing the conversation. We had, we had the millionaire tax, the millionaire tax, right? You want to talk about that? The millionaire tax, we got more money come back that's supposed to dedicate it to roads, right?
Hmm.
And highways? So this $200,000 in previous years, in previous, last year, went to our roads, didn't it?
Correct. That's correct.
Well, I know, but that's part of the conversation this year. What I'm seeing has happened, happened here is we got a millionaire tax that gave us additional money for roads.
Hmm.
So it's so because money is fungible, we decided we're not going to put the 200 toward roads anymore. Isn't that, isn't that what happened?
No, no, none at all. First of all, the money that we're talking about putting into debt or taking from debt stabilization came from free cash last year. It didn't come from the millionaire's tax. That can only be used on transportation.
I'm talking about last year. Last year, we put $200,000.
From free cash. Last year, we put $250,000 toward roads. Correct. I think what you're saying is that the reason that we increased road stabilization and are relying on the millionaire's tax is because you're correct. In order to meet the million dollar contribution and balance the budget, the proposed fiscal 26 budget includes no money toward the, the road maintenance program. I think that's what you're getting at.
That is what I'm trying to say.
Right. That's correct.
So just say, say that again. So we're no, this year, we're not putting more money in the road stabilization fund. We're not putting.
No, that's not correct. Seventy-five percent of marijuana revenue goes into road stabilization automatically.
And the 200,000, what was that? Say that again?
I, I think you're confusing two topics here. It's going to be confusing for people at home. Last year, we took free cash, which is the difference between the money that we, we expected to collect and what we did collect, and we put that into debt stabilization. This year, what I think you're trying to say, but I think some people may be confused, is that the reason the millionaire's tax is mentioned is because in order to balance the budget, which is article six, we needed to completely eliminate the general fund contribution to roads. And yes, we are relying on both, a combination of increasing the road stabilization appropriation from 800, which is what we did last year, to 900, and we're relying on the revenue that we are now getting from the millionaire's tax reserved for transportation.
How much money did we get from millionaire's tax?
Just about 240,000.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's what I heard.
Right.
What I'm feeling, what I'm feeling is that $200,000 would have been going to fixing our roads, but, but this year, we're using it to balance the budget because we got to pay for the middle school.
I understand the concept, but this 200,000 couldn't have gone to roads because it was in debt stabilization. It can't be used for anything other than debt payments. I understand what you're saying. You're pointing out a very true point, that this year is the first year in several years we aren't contributing a penny to roads from the operating budget. That's true.
We probably would have been doing that had it not been for the millionaire tax.
If we didn't have the millionaire tax, we would be having a different conversation. But this 200,000 could only be used for debt stabilization because that's its source.
I understand because of fungibility of money and all that. Okay, I'll let it go, but you know, this is what happened from a million, from the million dollars we're paying for the middle school. We had to do this to budget, to, to balance our budget and, and, and.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Is that, I thought you were talking about the millionaire's tax.
No, I'm talking about that 200,000, that 200,000 dollars right there. We had to do that to balance the budget.
Yes, because of the million dollar contribution to the middle school. Absolutely correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to.
Oh, yes, you are correct.
I had to take that out of debt stabilization, money to use it.
Totally correct.
Okay, well, that's what I just didn't say it the right way.
I thought you were talking about the millionaire's tax for transportation. But you are correct, Billy.
For me, they're all kind of tied because that millionaire tax made, made that more money fungible for us so we could use it for other things and still say we're fixing the road.
Absolutely. That is correct. So to summarize, so that people are clear, what Mr. Crawford is correctly saying is that in order to balance the budget, as a result of our million dollar contribution to the middle school, we are relying on the $200,000 from the debt stabilization to balance the budget. That is entirely correct.
That's what, thank you for.
Of course.
Trying to getting that out.
Yeah. It's, it's not even that late, so I have no excuse. Any other questions on article three? Excellent. I'm going to move on then to article four. Article four is to continue and approve revolving funds to see if the town will vote to establish pursuant to the authority granted under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and one half, fiscal year 26 spending limits for the following table of revolving funds to be expended in accordance with Article XLIV Department of Revolving Funds, Section 5, Table of Authorized Revolving Funds of the Town's General Bylaw. The table is large, so it's not on this tiny slide, but it is printed in the guidebook. This article authorizes the annual expenditure limits for revolving funds, which are shown in the guidebook, for town departments under MGL, Chapter 44, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025 and ending on June 30, 2026. Of note, there are no new revolving funds in this year's town meeting warrant and the expenditure limits are the same as fiscal year 25. Questions on article four? Excellent. Article five is another annual item, authorization of the select board regarding contracts in excess of three years to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into lease or purchase agreements for up to five years to purchase or lease equipment for the town and said contracts to be subject to annual appropriations or take any other action relative thereto. Every year, this article authorizes the select board to enter into lease purchase agreements for items including office equipment, vehicles or other equipment. Without town meeting approval, the board would be limited to lease agreements of three years. This requires a majority vote. Questions on article five? Moving on to article six. Article six is appropriation. It's the general fund budget for fiscal year 2026. If you've got your guidebook, on the back of the guidebook is the actual budget exhibit. Before I dive into the meat of it, just a reminder to folks that if you visit the town's website, you can see the different iterations of the budget. You can see the different budget presentations. We have links to the video recordings of presentations giving to the select board into the finance committee. So I'll give a high level overview of the fiscal year 25 budget, or 26, rather. In fiscal year 2025, the budget was 49.1 million dollars. The proposed fiscal year 26 budget is 52.3 million, which represents a 3.2 million dollar increase or six and a half percent. That includes our exempt debt, which we have a slide about next. That exempt debt, for those that aren't familiar, is otherwise known as the debt exclusions. Those are the items that are voted by town meeting and then a ballot, like the middle school, which we've talked about. Without the general, without the debt exclusions included, the general fund budget, which is within the Prop 2 and a half plus new growth, is 3.6%. The main budget drivers we've talked about is the contribution to the middle school. In the operating budget, you're seeing $900,000 because that's what's coming from the general fund. $100,000 is coming from the school department's revenue on the Lakeview Ave school lease. So because that money goes directly into a separate account, can't be used in the operating budget, it doesn't show up in this budget. But we have a slide that shows how we get to the million dollars. Other budget drivers include contractual labor increases, our health insurance increase this year at 17%. And the only new item that is not really a fixed cost is the decision to make a previously part-time administrative assistant a full-time public safety admin, and I'll talk about that in a subsequent slide. I do just really quickly want to talk about the exempt debt. Again, the exempt debt is what town meeting is asked to vote on, on top of your tax bill. The middle school is an example. A few years ago, there was work at the high school. The elementary school was originally funded by excluded debt as well. These are billed outside of the general fund and on top of the two and a half percent limit, limit set by Prop 2 and a half. In fiscal year 25, this current fiscal year, there were three items that fell under our exempt debt, the THS roof, as well as the Tingsboro High School boiler, and the middle school. In fiscal year 26, both THS projects have fallen off, so the remaining excluded debt is just the new middle school. The total debt service for fiscal year 26 on exempt debt is 2.9 million dollars. As was committed to the town, 1 million of that is cut off the top through those sources I talked about, 900,000 from general fund, which is represented in this article, and $100,000 from the Lakeview Ave lease. That means that the total exempt debt being passed on to taxpayers is 1.97 million, which is an increase over 1.83 million in fiscal year 25. On the public safety administrative assistant, this position has existed for the last three fiscal years as a part-time administrative support position in the fire department. The police department has been asking for many years for a records clerk. Both of those departments are operating in increasingly regulated environments. The fireside has seen dramatic increases in regulations being handed out from the state. And on the police side, public record requests from the police can be incredibly complex because they're dealing with DCF reports, they're dealing with very sensitive information, reports of sexual assault, things like that. The liability on the town's part to not properly respond to records requests, particularly on the police, is challenging. They've asked repeatedly for a full-time position. Understanding our financial constraints, I'm appreciative to Chief Woods and Chief Russell. We've come up with this proposal, which takes the existing part-time position in the fire department, makes it a full-time position, which also helps with recruitment. It's incredibly tough to find part-time help in this environment. They will spend 15 hours a week doing records at the police department, which is the new portion of this request, and the fire department will continue to have 25 hours a week doing administrative support. The other big change you'll notice if you look at the exhibit is that it appears to be, there appears to be a really large increase in the facilities budget. As you may remember, this is the first fiscal year where we have a fully implemented Department of Public Works. And so what we did in this budget to truly represent where tax dollars are going is took the salaries of our custodial staff out of the highway budget, which is where they previously appeared, and put it into facilities. So while it looks like facilities all of a sudden has new positions, we are operating with the same number of positions. We simply said, look, it's really not an accurate representation to say that these two and a half employees are in the highway department when in reality, they're doing facilities work, not highway stuff. These two slides were a hit at the budget office hours that we hosted. This just shows you where the operating budget goes. If you were at town meeting last year or any of our prior budget meetings, this pie chart looks basically the same. Our biggest expense is education. This pie chart here, 67%, represents the cost to operate the Tingsboro Public School and also the assessment that we get for Greater Lowell Technical High School. Our next biggest category is, of course, public safety, followed by Health and Human Services, Public Works, General Government, Land Use and Development. Of note, our debt service within the operating budget represents 1.4%, which is well below what our policies recommend and what the bond rating agencies want to see. And the final slide on the budget just shows you where our staff are. As you can imagine, it matches almost exactly the last slide, 71% of staff work in education. This includes only the Tingsboro Public Schools because I don't have data on the number of employees at Greater Lowell Tech, and they're also not on our health insurance, followed again by public safety, Public Works, General Government, Health and Human Services and Land Use. I just want to go back to the explanation. Are there any questions on the budget granular level that I can answer right now? Article six?
Going back to the $900,000 out of the operating budget, $700,000 of that is, is actually coming out of what? And then what, how are you virtualizing that? The 700 coming out of your revenue.
Correct.
And there's 200 coming from debt stabilization.
Correct.
Those are still considered general funds?
Correct. The way the stabilization works, if you look at the, the budget under other sources, the state takes whatever you deposit from stabilization into your debt service payments and considers it an other source under revenue. So the 200 is in the general fund.
Still general fund.
Correct. But you're right, it's 700 and then 200 from debt stabilization.
The reason I bring that up is, is that do we expect this to continue next year and the year after that?
Yes. I, I would be lying if I sat here and said that it's easy to do, but the most difficult year is the first year you put it in. Taking a budget that previously included $0 for an item and increasing it even to the 700 is incredibly difficult. The fact that we've done that here will make it easier in subsequent years. I mean, I'm not saying it's going to be a cakewalk, but the board has made it very clear to me that this is not a negotiable item and all of our budget forecasting includes this in, in every single year.
Okay, but how it's used is another story.
Right.
And then the other thing that's worthy of note is that although you showed on the other, other slide that the exempt debt, our shared, resident shares, 1.97 million?
Correct.
I think it's important for people to realize that that's for 30 years, not that exact number necessarily. And then the million dollars that we're spending that we're saying is the town share, the town don't make any money unless we give it to them.
Correct. Yeah.
So the, actually, the residents are paying $3 million.
Correct.
Roughly for that middle school every year for 30 years. 30 years is the longest debt in the history of Tingsboro that I'm aware of. Okay, since, certainly since I've lived in town. All the other debt's been 20 years. Okay? This one is 30 years, $3 million roughly. Right? Thank you.
Correct. Any other questions on article six, the general fund budget for fiscal year 26? Article seven is compensation of elected officials to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of elective officers of the town as provided by section 108 of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended for fiscal year 26. I want to note that the dollar amounts you see here are included in the appropriations that would have hypothetically at this point passed in article six. So this is not approving additional money, this is setting the salaries. You'll note that all of these positions, with the exception of one, are stipends for board members. There are no proposed changes in the stipends for board members over fiscal year 25. There is one proposed salary change. As you all, I think all of you here know, the town clerk in Tingsboro is elected. She doesn't report to the select board or the town manager. She reports directly to voters and her salary is actually set by town meeting, not by my office. So while my office negotiates every other contract, this is with town meeting. In fiscal year 25, the salary was $69,208 and the requested salary going before town meeting is $77,107. This represents over fiscal 25, an 11% increase. Again, I don't negotiate the salary and I know the town clerk is prepared to explain this at town meeting, but I wanted to point out that that is the increase here. Fiscal 25 salary is lower than what fiscal 24 was. As many of you remember, our longtime town clerk retired in fiscal, at the end of fiscal 24. But again, Jessica Brunella, town clerk, will walk through her request at town meeting on Tuesday. Are there any questions on article seven?
I would just say, in regard to the town clerk, I, I support what she's asking for. Okay, she, she really worked for less than she had to the first year and, and she's doing a great job that I can tell. She's been very responsive.
I second that.
She's been very responsive to residents. Okay? And I haven't heard anyone say that she didn't respond to them.
Can confirm.
Okay, one other question I would ask you.
Yeah.
Will that slide you have on there right now?
Yep.
Will that be on TV?
Yes.
That'll be showing on TV?
Yes.
I just wanted to reflect the select board stipends.
Oh, yeah, this will be showing on TV. And I had to split them up, the following stipends on the next slide, I can't fit them all on one page, but yes.
As long as those are showing, because that, that, the reason that's important is they're, they're requesting stipends when, when we have special town meeting article one, costing us $688,000. So people ought to know, okay, the select board are still getting stipends, although they made a poor decision.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on article seven? All right, moving right along to article eight, which is transfer of funds from free All right, moving right along to Article eight, which is transfer of funds from free cash to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the following sums of money for the following purposes or take any other action relative thereto. $52,500 to fund our annual contribution to the other post-employment benefit, otherwise known as OPEB Trust Fund. This helps the town meet its long-term OPEB funding plan commitment. This trust fund was established many years ago and based on an actuarial analysis done by somebody far smarter than me. The dollar amount of $52,500 on an annual basis is what we need to continue to meet to end up fully funding our commitments. This covers retirement expenses like health insurance for retirees, Medicare and Medicaid. $189,000 as a reimbursement to the school department from Medicaid. This $189,000 is due to, is actually owed to the school department because of the way it comes in as revenue. Town meeting has to reallocate it using free cash to the school department. But these Medicaid reimbursements come directly from the school department. The compensated absence fund, $23,500. This fund was established to fund unanticipated and unbudgeted mid-year payouts for sick and vacation time upon an employee's retirement. Prior to 2008 and in some, in a couple of collective bargaining units, 2012, there were, as people have talked about in municipalities and state government far beyond Tingsboro, very lucrative payouts for employees upon retirement relative to sick time and vacation. Because you often can't anticipate when somebody will retire, those are not included in the salary and wages lines that are budgeted. So the compensated absence fund was designed so that when a longtime employee retires, instead of leaving a large hole in a department's budget, the select board can transfer the funds to cover the deficit. So it can't be used for anything else, it can only be used to cover those payouts. As we get further away from 2008, we have less and less employees that are eligible. I think by my rough count, we've got probably five left. Almost all of them are on the public safety side as they start to retire. And some of them use all of their time, so you don't have to worry about it, some don't. The balance in that fund right now is down to just above $12,000. And so based on our current expectations, I think that $23,500 is the final contribution that we'll need to make. But just an example, we had pretty high-profile retirement at the beginning of this fiscal year. That employee was entitled to an $11,000 payout. Had that had to come out of the department's budget, they would have had a deficit certainly by the end of the fiscal year. But thanks again to somebody before me's foresight, we were able to cover here. And then the final item is $50,000 to fund the FinCom Reserve Fund. This account is under the control of the Finance Committee only and can only be used to provide for, quote, "extraordinary" or unforeseen expenditures in a current fiscal year. And as long as I've been with the town, we've never tapped into the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. We have Finance Committee members that have been here much longer than me.
We have, we did a couple of times.
Okay.
For the police department.
Police department, gotcha.
There was a boiler issue.
Yes.
Called it a boiler issue. And I think there was also communication.
Upgrades over there.
Communication issue.
Okay.
But I hear what you're saying, it was rare.
It's rare. And it's under the, it's not under my control, I can't make the expenditure. Department head would have to make the request to the Finance Committee and the committee would have to vote as a whole. We funded it this year, we haven't used it, we're closing in on the end of fiscal year. Anything that's not spent reverts back to your free cash balance. So it's not like the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund continues to pile up year over year. At the end of the fiscal year, the money, if it's not spent, goes back to the free cash.
That's what I like about it.
Right.
We've got $50,000 set aside, hopefully we don't have to use it.
Right.
So you guys can't use it. And I can keep it in our savings account.
Absolutely. Yeah. It was designed flawlessly. Good to see you, Fran.
Thanks, take care.
Any questions on Article eight? All right, then we'll move right on to Article nine, borrowing and appropriation, capital improvements for fiscal year 2026 to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate and borrow a sum of $487,863 and that the town be authorized to accept any available grant funds for the purpose of funding the following items. First is $300,000 to fund a schematic design for a new fire station. This has been talked about at several select board meetings. For years, we put a pause on capital improvements in police and fire with the hopes of one day constructing combined public safety building. We are obviously realizing the constraints of our budget. And so what the board has decided and tasked me with doing is working with our fire chief to, one, identify the most advantageous parcel for a fire station and, two, get us to a schematic design point, which will tell us truly what the cost will be. These are, these dollar amounts are not to exceed, so it doesn't mean that we will spend the $300,000. If we go out to bid and we only get a bid for $125,000, we just simply don't borrow the additional amount. The schematic design is not site-specific, though I've said in public meetings that right now we are looking at the Winslow School. We've confirmed that the building can work there whether the building is taken down or not. So the schematic design, the reason we're stopping at the schematic design phase is because if you go any further than that, you really need to have decided what the site is. This will get us to a point, though, where we can have conversations with the town about what the true cost of building a fire station is so that when residents feel like they can afford the fire station, they've got all the information that they need. The second item that appears on borrowing is capital improvements for the police department, particularly exterior building envelope improvements totaling up to $187,863. As I mentioned, for years, we stopped investing in the police and fire departments because there was this conversation about a combined building. In the meantime, we continued to use the buildings, and these are 24/7 departments, and we didn't make the improvements we needed. So earlier this year, with the use of our remaining ARPA funds, we had an architect come out and do a capital plan for both buildings. The $187,000 worth of exterior building envelopes, that deals with structural issues on the roof, the foundation, windows. Those were identified as critical, top priority items for the police department. So realizing that the reality of us building a police station in the immediate future is slim to none, it's important, in my opinion, and I think the select board's opinion, that we spend the money to make sure that the police department's building continues to operate. This would, this is a debt article, but it's not excluded debt. It would be paid for using debt service that is included in Article six, the operating budget. However, because it's borrowing, it requires a two-thirds majority. Questions on Article nine?
No questions, just offering more. And I'm sure others will bring it up at town meeting. That building was built by, how can I use the words? By people that were trying to do a good deed with limited resources. They were trying to give a police building, they built a building with limited resources. So not everything was perfect. And so I think that's kind of what we're doing now is making it perfect.
Yes. And you're certainly correct, Mr. Crawford. It was piecemeal, they did sections at a time. The ambulance bays, when we started ambulance service, were constructed, from my recollection, by donations received by the Firefighters Association. I think many of them were swinging a hammer. And the bunk rooms that we created, we used state COVID money at the beginning of the pandemic to do. So we really haven't invested much from the municipal budget into it.
It looks good now.
Yeah, they do a great job. Yeah. Any other questions on Article nine, borrowing and appropriation? All right. Article 10 is an appropriation for the Ambulance Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2026 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the select board to operate the Ambulance Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 26. The Ambulance Enterprise Fund is outside of the general fund because an enterprise fund is supported entirely by revenues they collect. So when we transport a patient, similar to a private ambulance service, we bill for that service and the anticipation is that the billing covers the costs. The budget for fiscal year 26 is proposed at $689,540. We've been trending, the Ambulance Enterprise Fund has been trending in the black for a couple of years now. Based on our current revenue projections, we'll close the year somewhere in the $35,000 to $40,000 over. I say trending in the black, the Ambulance Enterprise Fund doesn't make a profit. Those funds can only be used then to upgrade infrastructure, purchase new equipment, eventually pay a lease on a new ambulance if we need one. Because it's not part of the operating budget, it shows up as a separate warrant article on the annual town meeting warrant. Questions on Article 10, Ambulance Enterprise Fund? Fantastic. Similarly, Article 11 is an appropriation for the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2026 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the Sewer Commission to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 26. The proposed budget for the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 26 is $3.74 million. Again, similar to the Ambulance Enterprise Fund, these funds come directly from revenue generated by business-like activities, so your user fees, betterments, and in this case, retained earnings. Retained earnings on an enterprise fund are the same thing as free cash on our side. It's the difference between the revenue they expected to bring in and the revenue that they did. The Sewer Enterprise Fund is under the control of the Sewer Commission. Even under the DPW Act, the Sewer Commission retained complete control of the Sewer Enterprise Fund. So they set the budget and they approve appropriations from it. Questions on Article 11, Sewer Enterprise Fund? Excellent. Article 12 is a transfer of funds from the PEG Fund to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $159,687 from the PEG Fund to the general fund for the following purposes or take any other action relative thereto. That $159,687 supports PEG operating budget. That includes the operating expenses as well as the salary of a one full-time media director and a handful of per diem part-time employees that cover night meetings. This is outside of the general fund, it's technically not an enterprise fund, it's a reserve for appropriation because under the laws that establish PEG funds, a certain percent of your money that you pay to Comcast and Xfinity comes from Comcast and Xfinity back to the town and can only be spent on these purposes. So that's why it doesn't show up in the operating budget and that's why town meeting needs to authorize the use for what you're seeing happening this evening. Questions on Article 12, the PEG Fund? All right. Then I will take us to Article 13, appropriation for the Community Preservation Committee Fund to see if the town will vote a sum of money to be appropriated or reserved from estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year 26 with each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the payment of administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, debt service, community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses as follows. For those that aren't familiar, community preservation is funded through a 3% surcharge on your property tax bill and a less than 3% match from the state. Tingsboro was an early adopter of CPC and has done a lot with community preservation, but the funds can be used only on historic preservation, affordable housing, or open space and recreation. This year's article seeks $3,500 for weed control on Lake Massapog, $20,000 for Lake Muscopic weed treatment, which is a larger-than-normal expenditure to accommodate a sonar treatment, which I'm told is a more technological treatment to deal with advanced weed growth so that people can continue to use Lake Muscopic. We've done similar treatments on both Massapog and Flint Pond. Sorry, I don't know why I froze up there. We've also included $35,000 for administrative expenses. This is a reduction over previous years because we simply haven't used that. Administrative expenses are any costs associated with the CPC doing business. So currently, we're looking at requests for proposals to assess a project at the Winslow School. That's an eligible expense. If the committee was looking to purchase a parcel of land, an appraisal would be an eligible expense. But it's under the control of CPC. So only the Community Preservation Committee, which is a nine-member board, can approve the expenditures. And then we've got two final year, or two, not final, two debt service payments. One is year five on the First Parish Meeting House. That's $226,375. And year eight of 10 debt service on Old Town Hall, which is $181,500. Every year, CPC is required to put aside a certain amount of money toward the three allowable uses. And so every year, we've put $100,000 aside into the Historic Preservation Reserve, $100,000 aside into the Affordable Housing Reserve, and $100,000 into the Open Space and Recreation Reserve. Those are still under the purview of CPC, so they're not a separate fund. They're just money that we have to put aside for those particular uses. Questions on Article 13, Community Preservation Committee?
Sir, well, because I am
Yes.
Community Preservation Committee resident.
Member.
Member. But I'm at large, at-large member of the CPC. I would just, I wanted to point out another use that we had recently was affordable housing.
Yes.
Remember, we did a little something for affordable housing?
That's correct.
So that we could kick them off on maybe doing a
Yeah.
They really had no money. And now at least they have a little seed money.
Yes.
To try to put together a program.
Yes.
So I just wanted that to be said too, that's another use.
Yes, that's another good point. And just what Mr. Crawford is talking about is the Affordable Housing Trust approached CPC earlier this year, looking for money to start an emergency rental assistance program. And they had never done one before. And so what CPC said was, let's see what the program would look like. But because the Affordable Housing Trust didn't have any money to develop a program, the CPC authorized a certain amount of money so that they could hire a firm that does this work to put together a proposal that would allow the CPC to actually evaluate its impact on Tingsboro, whether it's a responsible use, et cetera.
That came, that came from the administrative
Expenses, correct.
Expenses funding.
Yep.
And if you didn't have that bucket, people would have to wait till
Town meeting, yeah.
Till town meeting and you then hope to get some money and nothing would ever get done.
Absolutely.
So I just would
That's a good point.
So people see that as just a slush, that's not what it is.
Right.
Not what it is at all. I think it was one of the No, I guess I did.
Okay, no problem. Any other questions on Article 13? Okay, moving along to Article 14, the most exciting article on any town meeting warrant, approved prior year bills. In Massachusetts, nothing is easy. It is illegal to pay a bill that was incurred in a previous fiscal year without first getting an approval of town meeting. Article 14 does not increase any of these departments' budgets. It simply gives these departments permission to use their existing fiscal year '25 budget to pay these bills. So we have two bills that were incurred in the last fiscal year. $420 to KP Law from the town manager's office. KP Law provided labor council services to the town. And $195 from the library to Toshiba America, which is the company that they lease their copiers from. So again, just as a note, this article doesn't increase anyone's budgets by these dollar amounts. It is simply the approval to pay a bill because it was incurred outside of this current fiscal year. Questions on Article 14? And it requires the highest majority of any vote, four fifths.
I would like to say, one other thing, going back to the CPC.
Yeah.
Just remind people in the Finance Committee Guidebook, the balances for CPC is in that Finance Committee Guidebook. So if anyone wants to go find them, it's in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Yes.
Balances of all those buckets and the general fund.
It is, yes. That's a very good point. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. All right, Article 15, street acceptances, Riverbend Road and Faling Street to see if the town will vote to accept the layout of certain townways below described made by the select board under the provisions of MGL Chapter 82, Sections 21 through 24, and any other enabling statute filed in the office of the town clerk with the plans there mentioned and referred to for a more particular description. The particular roads in question are Riverbend Road and Faling Street. They're both relatively smaller roads on the east side of town. This would allow the town to accept them as public ways under the town's jurisdiction. Currently, they are not accepted, which means the town is technically not permitted to provide any type of municipal services like snow plowing or sanding. This item was brought forward by the Sewer Commission, which is in the running for a pretty extensive grant that would allow them to eventually extend sewer to these roads. However, the roads have to be under the jurisdiction and control of the town to do so. This is a three-part process. The first is the select board notifying residents on that road that they have an intent to lay out the way. The second is after having a complete survey done and giving the residents on the road the ability to view the survey, having a public hearing where they actually lay out the way. And then the final is town meeting accepting them as public ways. There's no financial implication at this time. Again, this is motivated by the Sewer Commission's application for a grant from the federal government that would allow them to first design a sewer expansion, but then also eventually install sewer on those public ways. Questions on Article 15, street acceptances? Excellent. Article 16 is a local option statute to see if the town will vote to adopt Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5(c) and 1/2, which provides for an additional real estate exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles, their properties, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors. And to provide that the additional exemption shall be up to 100% of the personal exemption to be effective for exemptions granted in any fiscal year beginning after July 1, 2025. First, I'll note that this is what we call a local option statute. In Massachusetts, there are various local option statutes that are laws that you only have to follow or can implement if your legislative body, which for us is town meeting, adopts it. So if nothing happens at town meeting and Article 16 doesn't pass, then we stay the way that we are currently operating. If it does pass, this allows our Board of Assessors to grant up to 100% additional exemptions for the qualifying classes I mentioned. Individuals that receive abatements because they're blind, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors. Now, every case is unique, it depends on your personal qualifications, you have to apply. The Board of Assessors reviews it. But we'll take the most generic example. If you're a veteran receiving the maximum statutory exemption, which is $1,000 off your property tax, if this passes, we would be able to grant an additional $1,000, right up to 100,000 or 100% on your personal property taxes. There is one note that this section of law, and I didn't write the law, so I can't explain it. It explicitly provides that an applicant cannot in any case pay less than what they paid in the prior year. So it is very possible that in the first year, an applicant wouldn't see the full benefit. As time goes on, valuations go up, they would start to see it. I couldn't tell you why the state put that clause in there, that the town doesn't have any flexibility on. The one thing I want to note in full transparency is that abatement or exemptions like this don't reduce the town's revenue. Essentially, what it does is it shifts the tax burden from residents that are getting the abatement in very small amounts, because it's a small number of people, to the rest of taxpayers. So the town will still collect the full revenue under Prop 2.5. This would allow us to grant an additional exemption. And our assessor's office is fantastic, they ran a calculation. The average annual impact is an $18 increase. But that's only $3 more than the annual average impact if we don't adopt Section 59. So I just wanted to point out that other taxpayers technically, to a small degree, subsidize the abatements. But this is something that many towns are starting to grant, and I think in the times that we're in, it makes sense. This was brought to the select board by the Board of Assessors, which is a three-member elected body that oversees taxing in Tingsboro. And the select board and Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor of advancing it. Questions on Article 16? Excellent. All right, we're moving on to the meat of the article. Article 17, zoning amendments, Section 11, definitions. Three years ago, the town received State D L T A, which is District Local Technical Assistance Grant Funding, to hire a zoning review consultant to go through what were really antiquated and confusing zoning bylaws. At the highest level, zoning bylaws govern what you can and can't do in certain parts of town when it comes to building, uses, et cetera. Over the last two years, they've done a lot. They've updated the signed bylaw at the last town meeting. They re-promulgated the bylaws so that they made sense. At the beginning of this, or at the end of last year, we realized that there was a small amount of money left in that technical assistance grant. And instead of returning a single penny to the state, we used it to have our consulting come back and attack what was really low-hanging fruit, which is the definitions. So the definitions don't change what you can or So the definitions don't change what you can or can't do, but they correspond directly to sections like Section 2.14, which is the table of uses. It's a really long article, so I don't have the whole text on this slide, but it is printed in the guidebook. You'll note that the text that appears in red, bold font, is the new text, and anything that appears struck through is being deleted. So if you've had a chance to look at it, it's really making grammatical changes, getting rid of vague definitions. My favorite one to point out is there was a definition for "slaughterhouses" and "similar." I don't know what's similar to a slaughterhouse, I think those are pretty standard. Either way, this was brought by the Zoning Review Committee, which is members of the Planning Board, the Select Board, a resident at large, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this matter and voted 4-0 in favor of advancing it to Town Meeting, and both the Select Board and the Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor. This is a zoning amendment, so it does require a two-thirds majority. Questions on Article 17?
Not a question, but a comment for those that might watch this, or why we're not reading this. This is 22 pages long, Article 17. So that's why we're not reading it, folks.
It's very long.
So if you look at it, just read, the red, the red things are the ones that are being changed.
Yes.
The red items. The question I like to ask
Yeah.
And I'll be asking it on Town Meeting floor, maybe, is, from the zoning review people, did anything in here change any of our bylaws or any of our regulations, or was it just simply wording?
Just wording, but I would note that our previous bylaws made it sound like if you or I lived in Tingsboro and I watched three dogs that belonged to my children. They go on vacation, they say, Dad, can you watch my dogs? Under our previous zone, or occurring, because this hasn't been adopted, the zoning bylaw would technically consider that a kennel. It's the congregation of more than two pets that don't live in a domicile. One of the advantages to the Zoning Review Committee is we had members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which often hears requests for variances, disputes over the zoning, accurately point out, well, that's not really what happens, and this is a case we've run into. So it doesn't change anything, what you're doing today can continue to do, but what it did do was provide clarity that we're not going to start treating Colin as a business owner because he's watching two dogs that belong to his kid. But that's a great question.
So if we changed something, it was, it made sense to change it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Article 17? Excellent. Article 18 is a zoning amendment specifically around Section 10.2, the Wetlands District, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, specifically Section 10.2 thereof, entitled Wetlands District, by adding the text below shown in red and deleting therefrom the text below shown in strike-through. Articles 18 and 19, we'll talk about 19 in a second, these are part of the federal government, the FEMA flood map updates. FEMA flood maps are far more critical than people think, they relate directly to your ability in certain areas of town to get flood insurance. For the purposes of 18 and 19, nothing in the flood maps changed. There were administrative changes, like where you mail notices to, that now appear in FEMA's regulations that we had to adopt to match here. They've also renumbered their flood maps that the insurance companies look at, and in order to make sure that an insurance company doesn't look at our bylaw and say, well, actually, Colin, you've got the wrong map in here, those are being updated. But what this bylaw doesn't do is increase regulations, it doesn't add new areas of town into flood maps, it simply makes our zoning bylaw comply with the new FEMA regulations, which will be required by insurance companies by July 1st. Again, similarly, though, the Planning Board is required to and did hold a public hearing on this article. They voted 4-0 in favor. The Select Board and Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor, and this requires a two-thirds majority. Questions on Article 18? All right. Article 19, thank you, this is why it's going to be doing this live, because I noticed a typo. Article 19 is, like I said, another zoning amendment, this time to Section 10.3, Floodplain and Floodway Districts. To see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, specifically Section 10.3 thereof, entitled Floodplain and Floodway Districts, by adding the text below shown in bold and deleting therefrom the text below shown in strike-through. Again, just like Article 18, this article simply amends references to FEMA's address, submission processes for notifying them of changes, and will help the town make sure that it maintains compliance with applicable flood insurance policies. This was held, a public hearing was held, as with all the other zoning articles, by the Planning Board, they voted 4-0 in favor of advancing it to Town Meeting, and both the Select Board and the Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor. This does require a two-thirds majority. Questions on Article 19? Excellent. Before I close, just a reminder that Town Meeting is on Tuesday, May 6, at 7:00 p.m. It's at the elementary school. As always, thanks to the Tingsboro High School honor students, there will be childcare available for folks. The annual town report will be there, although you can pick up a copy here or view the digital copy online. We have hard copies in the town clerk's office and my office of the Finance Committee Guidebook, which if you've never been to Town Meeting, is the warrant plus explanations and the vote requirements. If you didn't get a chance to watch this live, you can watch the recording on the website or on local access television, and if a question comes up, our office is 978-649-2300, extension 100. Or if you prefer to email, it's just administration@tingsbrowma.gov. Stop by the office, the website has a scrolling banner for Town Meeting. On that page, you can get single video explainers for each article, the explanation, see the specific text, so if you really want to read 22 pages of Article 17, you can do that there, and also link to the town budget page, which really has all of the detailed information that we covered in Select Board Meetings, Finance Committee, and our Budget Office hours. That is all that I have tonight. I want to thank everyone that came in person for the questions, and I will see everybody on Tuesday, May 6, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.